We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance with our ambassadors, the ambassadors, coaches that are here with them from Cambridge and from Pearl Cone. If you are here, would you mind just leading us in the pledge? Thank you for what you do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Speaking of which, yes, we have student ambassadors from both Cambridge High School and Pearl Cone High School who will be speaking to us today, telling us a little bit about their experience. We cannot wait to hear from them. So we'll begin with Cambridge. Would your coach, your principal, and our student ambassadors please join us at the podium? Feel free to give them a round of applause as they come. This is a good deal.
Hello, my name is Denise King and I'm the Academy Coach at Cambridge High School. And it is my pleasure to introduce you to three of our ambassadors.
My name is Mahreel Faragala. And so my name is Mahreel Faragala. I am a senior at Cambridge High School. My academy is Architecture and Construction. My pathway is Architecture. And I moved to Cambridge when I was in my sophomore year of high school. And when I moved into the school, they asked me to pick three pathways. My first one was Health. My second one was Architecture and Construction. And my third one was Law. And so I didn't get the opportunity to be in Health Academy. But I got the opportunity to be in Architecture, which has taught me so much that I never knew, personally never knew about anything about Architecture, such as the programs that are in Architecture field like Revit and AutoCAD. And so this has given me like a strong feeling about Architecture. Even though I wasn't in Health, I still did well in the Architecture field. I still tried my best and I still pushed myself, which I, being in the Architecture field, gave me the Architecture background to have in the future, which I will tie this into my career. And my career is I want to become a surgeon. As a surgeon, I wish to have my own hospitals. And Architecture will be tied into my career by me designing and creating my own hospitals. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Zai Peek. I am in the 10th grade. I'm in the Health Science Academy and I am in the therapeutic services. In my class right now, we are talking about how we are, which careers we're going to go into, which pathways, and what we need to do in our future to prepare us for what we're going to do. And basically, for me, I know that I want to help people out. That's what kind of influenced me to go into the Health Academy, is just helping people out, helping animals, just helping out in general. And I think that this is the best pathway for me. One of the careers I want to do is to be a vet, anything that helps out with animals, anything that helps them out, anything that can help them in general. Second, I want to be anything that helps with mental health. So mental health disabilities, anything that just helps them out in general. And I just want to be able to be there and I feel like I'm one of the best people that can do that. Lastly, I want to be a surgeon, just anything that I can dissect, anything just in that general space. And I just think that what we're doing here in Health Science, in my beginning, I'm just starting, but I think it's going to be a great pathway for me to continue on and I'm excited for what is going to happen in the future. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kamvan and I'm from Cambridge and I'm a senior right now. And my academy is Art and Communication and my pathway is Digital Art and Design. So the reason why I picked Digital Art and Design is before I chose that academy, I have like a lot of interests, like music, fine art, and politics, stuff like that. So I choose Digital Art and Design because out of the four academies that we have, it is like the most appealing to me at that time. So in our design class, we do everything from like basic design principles such as like learning about typefaces, color theory, to like Adobe Photoshop, Illustrator, and HTML web design. And pretty much the main idea of learning this thing is that to use our design process and design thinking to like solve problems in the future, no matter what field you ended up in. And that to me is a really great deal because even though I thought I want to study political science in college, my interest kind of shifts that over time, like as I get a chance to explore many careers and stuff like that. So I plan to study political science for now. And even though I want to go to a different field from design, I still learn a lot from my academy and I can apply those design processes and design thinking to solve problems that I'm gonna face in the future, even though I pick Political Science or Music, no matter what career I ended up in. So I definitely love my design class and I don't regret taking it. Thank you.
Give them one more round of applause to Cambridge. Now, we also have student board members who sit at this table with us, not only to offer their thoughts, but also to offer support to their colleagues who are ambassadors or who sit in seats in our schools each day. Would one of you all mind speaking to what you heard?
I just wanted to say it's very wonderful to see you guys here. And I think that it's great that you came in front of the board and you talked about your experiences, which I personally haven't seen before and it's wonderful. I also think that you guys are being very good role models because you're showing that not only is it possible to have dreams, but it's possible to turn those dreams into goals, which you guys are doing with your selected pathways. And all I could say is keep doing this. If you have friends, tell them to come in front of the board, to come when they have those opportunities to tell us about their experiences. And thank you very much for letting me see this firsthand too. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Evan Eizer. He's a junior at MLK. So it's just good to connect our students. And thank you for that, Dr. Battle, for supporting these connections. All right now, from my neck of the woods, the Firebirds from Pearl Cone High School, if you would not mind meeting us at the podium, just to tell us a bit about yourselves and a bit about your experience at PCHS.
Good evening and thank you for having us. I do bring greetings from Dr. Miriam Harrington and our thoughts are with her today. Also, our other ambassador is not here today because she got a last minute call for a callback. She's going to college and she's a dancer and she says she has to dance, so she does send her regrets.
Good evening. My name is Israel Perez and I go to Pearl Cone High School and I'm currently a sophomore. Something that was really drawn me in PCH is their music program. I'm a producer, engineer, songwriter. I do it all when it comes to studio. Something we're doing in Mr. Murray's is I forgot to mention that I'm in his sophomore and junior class. So we learn how to sample in his junior class. We learn how to sample, mix, mix people's audio. We do it all technically. Everything you hear from music nowadays is technically what we're learning as me being in his junior class, as far as going as high school. I feel like me doing this elective, I taught myself how to do music, so I find the love and passion for it wherever I go. Music has been a part of my family for ever, since I was five, I've been addicted to music. With Mr. Murray, I want to give him a big shout out because he helped me with everything I know. That's really it. I also would like to thank my peers at the healthcare. And thank you guys for letting me come up here and share.
No, thank you, thank you. And we have our senior student board member, if you wouldn't mind recapping.
Hi, Israel, thank you so much for sharing your story at your school with the board. I know it can be kind of intimidating speaking in front of a bunch of people, but I find it very admirable for student leaders to come up and share their story through diversity and through their different experiences. And I just want to highlight how MNPS facilitates great learning and just advancement of student leadership, student voice, and our current passions even before we entered high school. And you just being a sophomore, I know that you're going to do great and wonderful things. I thank you again for being a leader at your school and paving the way for other student ambassadors and for underclassmen and students to come. Thanks.
Thank you all. Thank you for... Thank you, Academy Coaches, for being here as well. All right, with that, we'll move on to our governance issues. With the consent agenda, do I have any amendments before we call for... Oh, we have one. Mrs. Masters?
Yes, I mean that we pull item B4 from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay. Any others? All right, do I have a motion to accept as amended?
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. All right, we'll move on to Ms. Masters, 1B4, Country Music Foundation, DBA, Country Music Hall of Fame and Museum.
Thank you. Thank you. So I just wanted to seek some clarification around this one. So I understand that the contract is for up to $30,000 with Country Music Hall of Fame and Museum for the Hume-Fogg Magnet High School Prom. And so I just wanted to ask for clarification on the board floor about the source of those funds for that event.
Sure. Dr. Battle?
I have a point of order. Can I make a motion first so we can continue discussion?
We can. I move to approve consent item B4.
Second.
All right. That's all right. Dr. Battle?
Thank you. Mason Bellamy is approaching the podium to respond to the question.
Good evening, Board. Traditionally, funds for high school proms are raised by the individual senior classes. And they start doing fundraisers even as early as their freshman year and they go into those accounts. And the source of funding for those will come from fundraising from that senior class.
So is it correct that the reason we are being asked to sign a contract for this is because it's above the threshold of $25,000? And so a Country Music Hall of Fame and Museum is asking that there be a signed contract with MNPS in this particular case?
I don't want to speak to our rules as far as...
Yeah, my name is Scott G. and I'm with the procurement division here at MNPS. And I can speak to some of those things. Typically, a $21,000 purchase would not need to come to the board for approval. And depending on the risk, whether it be risk of things happening at the venue, would really determine whether or not a contract is going to be in place. Some of those has to do with insurances and things like that. The reason this is coming to you all is because right now it said at $21,000 with a not to exceed of $30,000. Things we've seen in the past from some of these events is some of the changes that would happen pretty close there too would cause an increase in the price. And we just wanted to be as transparent as possible in case it went above the $25,000 amount.
Is there any circumstance where MNPS would be liable for any of those funds outside of what has been raised by the school?
Sure. That would not be a typical thing that we've seen. Usually, the school knows in advance and so they know how much to charge for tickets, fundraising they've done in the past. And so we haven't seen a case to where the school is, the district is charged for those. So...
So, I mean, is it correct that this is a circumstance that we would, if we were asked to do a contract like this for any of our high schools, under these circumstances, we would be willing to do that? This isn't a special situation for a specific high school, anything like that?
No, no. You'll see many more of these, especially the larger schools. McGavick, for instance, graduate has prom typically at Opryland, if I'm not mistaken. So it's just starting the prom season. So depending on the size of school, it depends on if you're going to see more. And I would anticipate that you'll probably see more as we get closer to that time for prom.
I believe the Four Seasons is on here as well. Item number six, I believe, is also one of the proms.
Yeah, we do typically see this as a board, like you said, especially for the bigger schools and especially once we lower the threshold to $25,000, which is why we see so, we have to see so many contracts.
Yeah. Happy to see all those HVAC contracts too.
The irony. Political joke, political joke.
Well, that's actually a good name for an HVAC company. Thank you. I just, yeah, I really just wanted to offer that clarification around the source of funds and that... Yeah, that's it. Those are all my questions.
Okay. So we move to accept it. Thank you, staff, for answering those questions. All in favor, please raise your hand. That has really tickled you. All right, it passes unanimously. We will now move on to our director's report. We did not see you all at the beginning of October because of fall break, so I hope you all enjoyed it. But Safe Schools Week was last week and we're looking forward to hearing from Dr. Battle with her report.
Thank you so much, Chair Bugs and board members. It is great to see all of you after a few weeks apart and I too hope that you all experience a restful fall break. Before I jump into my report, I do also want to acknowledge and welcome Ms. Mara Sullivan, who has joined MNPS as our new Chief Operating Officer. So if you would, please stand for just a moment so we can acknowledge you and welcome you to MNPS.
All right, so first off, I wanted to give a shout out to Hume-Fogg volleyball team on their exciting state championship win last Friday against East Hamilton. Let's give them a round of applause.
Let me tell you, it was so great to see so many students and families there cheering them on to victory. I enjoyed celebrating with Hume-Fogg's team, Dr. Hargis, the staff, right after the victory. And then again on Monday, as they kicked off a celebration on behalf of the volleyball team first thing Monday morning. So again, way to go, Blue Knights. Keep them coming and keep up the great work. I also want to shout out all of our great principals at MNPS who are leading their school teams to achieve excellence every day by making sure and ensuring that every MNPS student is known. Our principals do amazing work. It's challenging work and our community leaders from across the city got a sense of that during Pencil's Principal for a Day event last week. So thank you to everyone who came out and participated and supported that event. And thank you to all of our principals for continuing to shine bright and to showcase all the great work happening across the district. So today, in recognition of School Safety Week, which was last week as Ms. Bugs mentioned, I wanted to touch base on the topic of school safety and what we do as a district to keep our students and faculty safe. School Safety Week was established in 1984 as a way to ensure that everyone involved in schools, from students to school board members and public safety leaders, everyone would advocate for school safety. Without safety, education is severely compromised. To learn, you need to feel safe. Thankfully, here at MNPS, we have zero schools that have been designated unsafe or persistently dangerous as defined by state law. However, we must always be working on improvements to make for an even safer, welcoming learning environment for everyone. There isn't one entity solely responsible for school safety. It takes a great deal of teamwork to put in place the plans, protocols, procedures that help to reduce incidents within our schools and prevent many problems from ever getting off the ground. We have our MNPS security team, which works with schools to plan, prepare, and respond. And I'll say more about them in just a moment. Our MNPD SROs get to know students and coordinate directly with other law enforcement when necessary. You may remember that our SRO at John Overton High School played a huge role in the response when we had an active volunteer on campus last spring. Student Support Services is heavily involved in our social-emotional learning programs and developing other policies and protocols to reduce behavior problems and address conflict before they escalate. Implementing all of those plans and procedures, our school staff, whether it's a principal, a campus supervisor, dean, school counselor, teacher, or paraprofessional, all of our team members, including students, must work collaboratively to keep everyone safe by having a keen eye for potential trouble and addressing it quickly. Everyone plays a role on the school team for safety. Our MNPS team does a lot of important work that most people never see with Metro Nashville Police Department and with school leaders to keep our students, staff, our buildings, and events safe and secure. They assess risks, they plan for emergencies and threats, they provide training and secure or manage grant funding to support all of these efforts. Speaking of teamwork, we know that safety and security isn't just about reducing incidents in the school or classroom, but about making for safer home and living environments. Oftentimes, violent incidents or fights that happen in school start outside of school in students' homes, neighborhoods, and communities. That's why I've been meeting with Chief John Drake, Judge Sheila Calloway, and others to identify some of the programs and policies that are working well, those that can work better, and those that need to be created or overhauled if we're going to come together as a community to prioritize the safety of our youth. I appreciate their partnership. And of course, Chief Drake is an MNPS graduate himself, having come from and graduated from East High School. Safety requires a holistic approach, both to respond to incidents when they occur and also try and stop them from happening in the first place. I'd like to talk about some of our key initiatives to instill restorative practices in our schools that will lead to better outcomes for students and a more constructive learning environment, starting with our advocacy centers. As you'll recall, advocacy centers were one of our social-emotional learning strategies that were approved by the board and funded by the mayor and Metro Council, along with some additional ESER funding. So you might be wondering, again, what is an advocacy center? It is a regulation space staffed by a full-time advocacy specialist designed to support social-emotional learning for students, their health, the health of our students, who become dysregulated or stressed and need fast interventions to get back on track in a place where they can It is a proactive approach designed to support the emotions underlying behavior, thereby preventing further escalation and behavior challenges that may otherwise result in a disciplinary infraction. In the advocacy center, students receive help for their emotions through calming, mindfulness-based strategies such as breathing, yoga, movement, connection with highly regulated and caring adults, reflective dialogue, and other calming strategies. While in the advocacy center, students will receive short-term intervention in the form of a reset before returning to the regular classroom. Now, last year, we launched the Navigator Program throughout the district as a way for school staff to connect with students on issues that may require interventions or additional support. This year, we've expanded that to include student self-reflections through our own Zone to Grow program, in which students complete a weekly social-emotional check-in where they reflect on how they're feeling and set goals. They also receive feedback from their teacher or navigator on their response. And we're going to get some feedback from our student board members in just a moment around our Zone to Grow program and our navigators. The first step in the Navigator Program is matching a student in the school with a navigator, someone responsible for keeping up with the student and monitoring their progress throughout the school year. This year, we have incorporated student check-ins into the process to allow self-reporting of issues that the student may be facing, as well as to get an overall sense of how the individual and the student body as a whole are feeling, be it very happy, very sad, or just doing okay. Teachers and navigators monitor the student responses and can follow up with additional support or interventions as needed. Here you can see some of the data that is collected at the district level that shows engagement with students and how they're feeling, as well as responses to alerts at the school or district level if a particular issue is flagged. Another key strategy here in MNPS is our Youth Court. Last year, our zone high schools and selected middle schools were hard at work planning for the launch of Youth Court. We are so excited to be expanding the Youth Courts programs in Metro Nashville Public Schools. Youth Courts, operating as peer courts in MNPS, will offer students charged with breaking school rules the opportunity to take responsibility for their wrongdoing while restoring and strengthening their ties to their community. These courts have roots in the principles of restorative justice, accountability, competency development, and community service. Peer courts hold students accountable for their actions while acknowledging the value the student brings to the school community. In the program, trained student volunteers serve as court members and issue sanctions designed to help their classmates chart a new direction. Meaningful community service is a part of every sanction. In the MNPS program, goals include decreasing school rule-breaking incidents, decreasing exclusionary discipline, meaning suspensions and expulsions, and decreasing discipline disparities, with an emphasis on a reduction for African-American students in alignment to our focused outcomes. Now, Youth Court is youth and family-focused, youth-driven, and built on the principles of restorative justice. Restorative principles of justice look at infraction as a poor decision that caused injury. It is the hearing's objective to help the defendant or the respondent make amends to the injured persons. Part of our core tenet of empowering and equipping leaders at all levels includes empowering and equipping students. And Youth Court is a great way to do that by helping students make better decisions, improve their conflict resolution skills, and expanding critical thinking abilities. Participants can gain a better understanding of their rights and responsibilities under the law while developing empathy through an understanding that bad decisions don't necessarily mean bad people. Redemption and second chances are critical if we want to stop the cycle of violence and keeping our communities and society from progressing to where we should be. Now, I'll wrap up this presentation with a quick look at a few other strategies that we use to increase social-emotional learning and safety. That includes strategic investments in restorative practice and close reviews of school culture and climate. We are constantly working to ensure that our students, staff, families, and facilities are safe and secure and that violence doesn't have a chance or a reason to get started in our schools. Now, at this time, I want to take just a moment to allow our student board members to share a little bit of their experiences, particular to our Navigator Program and our Zone to Grow initiative. So I'll turn it over to our student board members and they're going to just share some on-the-ground reflections of their realities within their respective schools. Evan Eizer?
Actually, I'd love to talk about the Navigator Program and the Zone to Grow because it's something that I was surprised with when I first experienced it, especially with the Navigator. When I first joined high school, they assigned me a navigator and he's been with me throughout my high school career. And he's always been someone not that, not only can I turn to for academic purposes, but also for personal purposes. So during the pandemic, he would send me texts saying, you know, are you okay? It's okay to talk to me. And he makes it easily approachable. And the fact that I've been with him for a long period of time strengthens that relationship and it's been something that's been supporting me throughout my high school career. And then this year with the Zone to Grow, I think that the fact that it's an online-based or, yeah, online-based system makes it much easier for students to actually express how they're feeling. Because sometimes, as a teen student, you coming up to a teacher and telling him that you're feeling sad might seem kind of difficult and it might make you apprehensive. But when you're texting or when you're on your phone and you're just typing it out, it feels like you're just, put in simple terms, you're just venting. And that makes it very easy to express your feelings. And every week, you can see your progress in the program, which allows... And every week, you can see your progress in the program, which allows you to see yourself develop. And the fact that teachers can respond to your programs or to your, to the things that you write. For example, when school first started, I was having, you know, difficulties with how my grades were affecting me. So my teacher sent me down, he saw my progress, and he was like, well, sometimes it's okay to not let your grades always affect you, and that's been something that's been helping me a lot, and I know it's been helping a lot of my friends. So I just wanted to commend this program and also the Navigator program that we've been exercising in the district.
So specifically to the Navigator program, I know that this took place on emphasis of last year during the pandemic when we were all virtual, and students didn't really have that much support that they do in the classroom with their teachers. I was actually lucky enough to have my navigator be a former teacher of mine at my school. And I understand that for Hillwood, most students received a teacher that they had a class with or that they already were introduced to, so that that relationship was already established, and I really appreciated that. With Zone to Grow, I do want to build up on what Ebenezer said. Sometimes, now that we're in person, it's kind of uncomfortable or difficult to talk to a teacher regarding your feelings, especially emotional well-being, face-to-face. But with Zone to Grow, when certain things are picked up, then teachers can reach out to the students if needed, and I really commend that. It's a way for students with a really good mental health as of right now to express their feelings, but also for those who aren't doing quite as well, to get the help that they need. I also wanted to add, for Hillwood, we have a weekly check-in that's specific for grades, and that kind of separates from Zone to Grow being mainly emotional well-being and a check-in, while this check-in that we do for Hillwood that may look different for other schools, kind of focuses on academics purely, and that could tie in to how a student might feel emotionally and how they're doing in class.
Thank you, young people.
Thank you so much, both of you, sharing your personal experiences in the space, particularly around navigators and Zone to Grow. Thank you also for just being willing to, to share and to speak in front of the board and the audience who's with us today. Always appreciate your perspective and your voices around things that are working well and areas that we can continue to focus in on. So Chair Bugs, that wraps up my director's report, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Wonderful. I mean, thank you very much, Dr. Battle, for these updates on everything happening in the district to protect our students and staff and help create a safer community. I really, really appreciate that you're elevating the idea that keeping schools safe is beyond just keeping them safe physically. It's the emotional, emotional and social supports. Community school, I mean, schools are where community issues really do bubble up, and so it's, it's all of our job, you know? I mean, every little bit helps. It's not just about keeping weapons off of campuses. Again, I'm grateful to Dr. Battle and her team, to my fellow board members, and even to Mayor Cooper and the Metro Council for the decision to invest in those advocacy centers that we talked about for a few years. And they're across the district, so it's not just in one concentrated area. We're not excluding anyone. We're just starting with our youngest, our littlest babies, our elementary school students, and then growing that. Because safety, like I said, is not just the job of one person. It's not just the principal, it's not the SRO. Safety is all of our responsibility. We've seen teachers, support staff members, even students. We had a student who was a little too shy to give his name, but a student stepped up in very tense situations where they stopped fights, or they simply let the right person know that a gun, a weapon, or that something has happened on campus. Our schools' teams do extraordinary work every single day. They are feeding our babies, they are taking our babies to school, they are educating them academically, socially, and emotionally. And we just really, really appreciate that because learning can't happen when students would be, if students are scared, just like learning can't happen if students have not been fed. And so you're making sure that their well-being is thought of. And if I may speak for the entire board, I know we are extremely grateful for all of these principals, assistant principals, school counselors, psychologists, teachers, parapros, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, and every single support staff member that, that makes this happen every day, that does intentional, critical work for our babies, for our babies, not just yours, not just mine, but ours. I mean, if I've said it once, I've said it a million times, schools are where community issues bubble up, so let's be mindful that it does not start or stop in a school building, on a bus, even in the cafeteria or on the field. We're also grateful, as you said, to Judge Callaway, Chief Drake, and everyone else in the community who works with our young people to create a safer community, again, outside of our schools. So thank you all. Thank you all so much for maintaining the, the welfare and the health of our littlest citizens, our babies. With that, I'll open up the floor for any questions for Dr. Battle. We have Mrs. Player Peters, Mrs. Tyler, and I believe Mrs. Masters, and Mrs. Elrod, and then Mr. Little. Everybody join in.
This is a question, it was more of a comment that, especially hearing our two school board members speak, but the skill that we're teaching our, our students now on how to advocate for themselves, particularly emotional, that's going to play a bigger part in their careers as they go into the workforce, the way the workforce is changing and how a lot of corporations and nonprofits are looking at the whole employee and how their emotional health affects their doing their job. And I think this is a safe way to start doing that, so as they become adults, it's not a whole new skill set. And I think that's something we'd always think about when it comes to education. It's not always the academic, but also the life skills that's learned, and be able to find that navigator or that person to talk to about your emotional health. And like, you know, you're talking about your grades. I mean, that's a common thing that goes on from college to grad school, even now, as my, as adult, making performance metrics and anxiety that you may get in performance metrics. I even had a discussion with my own boss about my anxiety not meeting the metrics by the end of the calendar year, and how that came into a, a discussion for the whole organization about how do we approach that to make sure we succeed. So I just want to commend Dr. Battle and the staff of even looking at it from a holistic standpoint of really teaching our children, and our, not children, our students, and our young adults, about really the life skills it takes to be a successful leader, because it's not all about the technical knowledge, but it's also the emotional leadership that you have to provide, and once you become leaders, that is not just becoming what you know, how you know. When you lead people, it's how you do it emotionally, because you're dealing with the whole human. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you for that, Ms. Player Peters. Ms. Tyler.
I just had a couple of questions about different things. So starting with the advocacy centers, I just wanted to double-check and be clear on the funding. Are the coaches for every advocacy center going to be paid through student-based budgeting moving forward into the future, or is that something that the district's going to pay for from central office?
So our current, our first phase of advocacy coaches were funded through ESER funds, and I believe that number was 14. Our second phase of getting, hitting our goal of having an advocacy coach in every school came through our operating budget. And so that will be a part of our student-based budget moving forward, and then we'll strategically be planning around the 14 that are originally approved through our ESER funding.
Okay. And then, if we're using school-based budgeting, then is there, like, is every school required to have one, or full-time, part-time? How does that work?
Every school's required to have an advocacy center staffed by an advocacy coach or specialist, but we do have a few schools who have different programming that meets the standards of advocacy coaches. So if you recall, we have a few schools who have Be Well in their schools. That is the same concept, idea around the supports that we need for our students, so those are approvable and will be covered under the funding for those coaches to be inside the schools.
Great. Okay. And then looking towards our middle and high schools' students, do we have a restorative justice specialist in every middle and high school?
We currently do not have a restorative practice coach in every middle and high school. Our goal is to have one in every school. In fact, a part of our ESER budget was to expand and meeting our goal and getting a restorative practice coach in every school. So that is our goal. Many of our schools do already have one, but our, our ultimate district goal is to have one represented in every school, and then also looking at the size of school to make sure we're meeting the needs.
And if our goal is to have every school have one, are we at some point going to have a requirement where you say, I know that the principal gets to choose what you do with student-based budgeting, but you have to at least have one restorative justice specialist, or is it still going to be completely up to the principal?
So the position and the space will be required in every school, once we get to the funding level that we need to be in. The training, most of the training happens at the district level, but we work collaboratively with the principal and the student services team on selection of the coaches for the schools.
Okay. That's good to know. And then, looking at the Navigator program, I just wanted to, I just wanted to take a second and point out that the Navigator program has always been meant to be a teacher and a student, and not necessarily reaching out to the parents. So I, I know that my elementary school students, last, last year, I was contacted by navigators as the parent, because they're elementary school. But my middle school child, he was contacted by him, like, by the teacher directly to him. And I think there's kind of been a little bit of a misconception about that the navigators are supposed to be reaching out to everybody's house and to everybody's parent. And so if we could just kind of, maybe just get somebody to clear that up and give a little bit of a, this is exactly what it's supposed to do, so that we understand what the, what the expectation is and, and how it's being met.
So every student, the goal is to have every student assigned to a navigator. Here's the point of clarity here with the navigators. When we were, and I think Angelie actually spoke to this extremely well, when we were in the virtual space, parents likely felt and heard the conversation frequently because students were at home. And that was happening through team's meetings, through phone calls, maybe even a visit from a navigator. Now that all students are back in person, that's happening for the majority of the time during the school day. So for instance, Angelie mentioned hers happening during advisory. And so it looks, it might look a little different in every school, because every school has different structures and schedules to accommodate that, but it will feel a little bit different in the in-person environment as opposed to being virtual, because those contacts, for the most part, are happening during the school day with the student. And so that is a shift that we did make. It was critically important when we were learning all virtually and the pandemic at home, that we were making those home connections. But now that all students are back in person, nine times out of 10, that connection is going to happen during the school day with the student. Now, we always promote family engagement and parents being involved, so we do still encourage parent contact communications updates as needed. In fact, if you are not aware, our parent-teacher conference day is happening on Friday. So if you've not yet connected with teachers for updates, progress, and supports needed, Friday is a great day to do that. I encourage all families to be connected in their process, and I will continue to encourage our staff to connect with as many families as possible to make sure those updates, those connections and supports are in place for every MMPS student.
Great. I appreciate that, because I was, you know, last year, I was wondering why I'm not hearing from my middle school, but I am from my elementary, and it's just really important for the public to understand what the parameters of the program are, so that we know what to expect as parents and as community members. Looking at the, the Zone to Grow program, where we're talking about letting students kind of do these check-ins, can a student refer a friend that they know are struggling so a teacher can reach out? Is that...
Yes, they can. I'm going to invite Carrie Randolph to the podium to speak a little bit about the capacity of, of Zone to Grow, students connecting with teachers, sharing information, assessing how they're feeling, so on and so forth.
All right. I think Ebenezer and Angelie did a great job. So it, they can probably speak to this, too. So there's an emoji, and a student chooses an emoji based on how they're feeling during that check-in, and then there's an open response box. A student can, there's a prompt, but a student can essentially write anything they want in that prompt. And we have seen, we have instances where what you've just described has happened. Based on that, if there's something concerning that's reported through that box, an alert is sent to the school team, the admin team to follow up on. So we have seen cases of exactly what you've described, where maybe isn't a student saying something about them, but a concern about a fellow student or another concern in the school have been reported that way. And I think they did a great job of describing, like, it is a space where there's some safe, this is a safe space to share those kinds of things.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much. I just, I, I really like these programs where our students have a chance to feel heard and seen, and they feel safe, so that they can say the things that are actually bothering them and, and have those concerns be addressed. Like Chairwoman Bugs said, you cannot learn if you do not feel safe, and you, we must make sure that our students feel safe. So I'm now looking at our Youth Court. Does every middle and high school have an active Youth Court?
Not yet.
Okay.
We are expanding on the Youth Court structure. Again, it started in our high schools. I think all of our high schools now are Youth Courts schools and have been trained, and now we're expanding into our middle schools.
Okay, great. And so I guess eventually, everybody will have it, so it's not that the school decides whether or not they want it. Eventually, we're hoping that everybody will have this. Is that correct?
We are, you can consider this, consider this a piloting space in the middle school area. It's been successful thus far. It's a good pride booster for our kids and them representing their school and working with their peers. So you, I would consider it a pilot space for middle school. We've historically had this program, and we've had some versions of it in, in middle school, but in, in our high schools, we started with our high schools that had law academies, and then quickly learned that with or without the law academy, it's a good structure that's in place, student voice, student accountability, and responsibility. So we're, we're again, now, for the first time, really dipping into the middle school space, we're going to learn and hopefully grow into all of our middle schools if all things go well, and it continues to support our students' needs.
Great. How are our students that are going to be on the court chosen?
I'm going to invite Dr. Michelle Springer up to the podium to talk about that specific
Thank you for your question. For our students who are interested, there is an application progress, process, and actually it's pretty rigorous. So if you are selected and you, you wanted to be there, so, you know, it's about leadership. It's not about a student who gets it right every single day, and it's about the ability to influence your peers in a positive way. So again, it's just an interview process, really looking at those students who are interested in leadership and, and elevating voice, and those students are selected, and it's a pretty big deal, right, to be able to select it and serve in that role, to be before your peers, and make those decisions collaboratively, to make sure that the school culture is inclusive, equitable, and supportive.
And if I might add, just being a previous principal who had Youth Court on campus, you know, sometimes it's hard to impress our young people. They, they have very high expectations and are dreaming, but it was a really big deal for my high school students to apply for, be selected as, and be trained as a part of Youth Court. In fact, on any, any day, just being on campus, you could identify a Youth Court leader because of their pledge to lead and to follow school rules and to support their peers in doing the same. So it's a pretty big deal, pretty big honor for our students who are selected to participate.
Oh, I'm sure it is. And then the last thing, just looking at the flow chart for the, the school-based youth process, it looks like the administrators, the one who gets to decide whether or not the issue goes to Youth Court, or is, is that correct? Or are there ever any times where it's just automatically triggered, we know this is going to Youth Court? Or does it always have to flow through administration?
I mean, there's a standard. We know which codes work through this process, but sometimes you might find a situation that's not, you know, normal, not a trend that the principal might have to have some discretion around if it goes through Youth Court. Again, this is a very confidential process, a very restorative process, so we want to be mindful of, of that, particularly in putting those instances before their peers. So there is a already pre-selected set of codes that we know will go through, but if there's something unique or different that we need to assess, it goes through the principal.
All right. I think, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Player Peters said, just it's so important that we are addressing the well-roundedness of our students. There have been so many studies about when you are learning how to self-regulate, regulate, and when you understand how to understand what you're feeling and why you're feeling it, it makes you not just your better self, but it makes you a better community member, it makes you a better friend, it makes you just somebody that people can trust and know that they can count on. And I think it's, we're in the business of more than just filling people's heads with facts. We want to make sure that we're creating and helping to shape students that will have positive impact in the community moving forward, and we cannot do that if we do not address social and emotional learning. So that is such a key, important strategy. Always, always, Maslow's before blooms. You cannot learn anything if your brain is in a state of flight or fight. You have to be able to feel safe before you can You have to be able to feel safe before you can get down to the business of learning. So I just want to applaud that these are what we're starting. I want to encourage that we continue, that we check up, that we ensure that they're doing what, what we intend for them to do and that our students feel like it's actually happening and that they're being heard and that they feel safe. So just kind of those continuous check-ins to make sure that everybody in every school feels like they're getting the same equitable treatment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Mrs. Masters? All right, Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. First, Abigail Wentz for saying Maslow because I was wondering who was going to say it.
So.
I was like, who's going to bring it up? All right, so my first question is a follow-up question in response to Board Member Tyler. With the restorative practice assistants, the schools that do not currently have those assistants, is it because we're not able to fund those or is it because we're not able to find someone to fill those positions?
More than likely, it's an alignment to the school improvement plan and they prioritize their investments in the priorities that they have. It's not that it's not a need, but they might have additional other priorities that they want to make sure they're investing in to meet the needs of their students first.
Okay. So I understand that the answer was is that they are required within the school-based budget. So even though they are required through that school-based budget, is it possible that they are not prioritized?
So the restorative practice assistants are not required in the secondary level because we've not been able to fund them at a level of a non-negotiable. We do recognize it as a strong restorative practice for secondary schools. So we have provided the supports and the means necessary for schools who have this area as a priority to be able to hire restorative practice assistants in advance of the additional funding for it to be visible in every MMPS school.
That, that is my mistake for writing down are required instead of are not required. I appreciate that clarification. Additionally, with the youth court opportunities as a follow-up, they are not in all middle schools currently. Do we have a timeline of when we would like them to be in all middle schools?
This year, our goal was to get to pilot into the middle school space. This is a new space for us, for the youth court programs, you know, and it's kind of a hard question to ask the director because everything would have been like yesterday. But hopefully, moving into next school year, if we have the resources available and the capacity to support, we would love to continue to expand across all of our middle schools.
I understand it's difficult, like on the spot. It's more of a, an ideal world. What are we trying to go for? What are we trying to shoot for? Okay, back now to my, my individual questions. For our security and SROs, do we have, let me write my, my little notes. Do, are any of those positions provided additional training in security or SROs over students that are neurodiverse, that may not, that may struggle with emotional or behavioral regulation?
Yes, we have expanded our training for our school security team and our SROs to address some of the most recent trends we've seen around social-emotional learning, meeting the unique and diverse needs of our students, de-escalation, implicit bias. Those are all trainings that we've started to make available to our security teams and in collaboration with MMPD. So those conversations are definitely in play and I'm looking out to see. Edie Young, anything you would add to that?
Okay, in August, we received invisible disability training for, in collaboration from Student Services. And so that's one of the other areas that we've been taking in, so did the SROs as well.
Excellent. Thank you for adding that one.
Thank you. I know that's been a request in the past from families. So I appreciate that specific date as well. So sorry, I'm looking through all of my notes. I should have made a star. Advocacy centers, we've heard, I've heard a lot of really good feedback on the training and the training that's provided there. Frankly, the feedback that I've received is that it would be really helpful, it would have been helpful to me to have had that in my para position or my other position that I've had inside of the school. Is there availability for us to expand this training since it has been so beneficial through, it has such benefits as we have all commented on, that outside of the advocacy center and is just frankly, seemingly a best practice? Do we have opportunities to expand it?
Well, I think this is a benefit to feedback and engagement because we've heard the same thing internally. And so that's something that our team is reflecting on and making determinations around how to expand access for, for the training. But consistently, we receive positive feedback around the advocacy coach training and the supports that are in place. So Dr. Springer has that on her radar and will continue to look at how we can leverage that particular training to other support staff and certificated employees.
Because I understand it's a multiple day, like at least a four-day training. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I, I didn't know how we would be able to replicate that, but if we can find a way to implement some of those best practices or where we're hearing the most impact, I think it's, it's obviously a valuable resource because I've heard it from multiple levels within our schools of how it would have, how it's helpful now, which is of course important, but how it would have been so impactful in other ways as well and how they're sharing that already intuitively with their past colleagues.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I had brought up, and I appreciate the conversations about us, including inside of our student parent handbook, about secure firearm info. And I understand that that will hopefully be included maybe in next year's parent teacher handbook. As we've all discussed, you know, the threat of any type of violence is out of our schools is a responsibility of all adults and it's a community concern and issue as we have discussed with our great partners in Judge Callaway and Chief Drake. And so my hope is that we will continue to have additional resources provided inside of our parent teacher handbook as an index potentially for parents so that they can have access of how to keep all kinds of things, whether it's medication to secure firearms away and not available to their minor students so that there's not potential gun violence and there's less access to them. So I appreciate that those conversations have been happening and that there's been support for it. That's what I have.
All right, Mr. Little?
Thank you. And just looking back in the notes, my question is, what's the ultimate goal of the Navigator program?
So if we recall back to the start of the pandemic, this is where the Navigators initiative came about. The intention was to make sure that our, every MMPS student had a caring adult that they were connected to, that they had someone who would advocate for them and help them navigate what they were experiencing at, at the time. The whole idea here and the goal here is for students to have that ongoing consistent support from their caring adult who knows their student as an individual, individual and, and then thus can personalize those supports that are needed for them to be successful. That those supports should range from the social-emotional learning space to the academic needs of, of our students.
Thank you, thank you. And is, how are we collecting data on the success as the students connect with their navigator? Like, and what I mean, are we collecting data where we can potentially see trends, both good and things that we may need to work on that we're seeing a, a lot of students experience?
Absolutely. We are very data-driven. I'm looking over to Michelle or Carrie. Do one of you want to respond to the, what we've seen in trends for the collaborative referral process, but also the feedback that we're seeing in Sown to Grow?
Sure. I mean, we certainly have talked about how that's a safe space for students and that every student known, cared for, respected and supported in those connections. But we, one of the other, that's the most powerful piece, right? But the, one of the other powerful pieces is the data that we can see, both school leaders can see, right? But we can see at the district level. And so, for example, last year with check-ins, we could, we, we do and still monitor the number of collaborative referrals that are generated, right, from check-ins. We also kept track of needs and we actually responded in real time. It was one of the pieces of data that we used to work with the virtual help centers as an example last year, right? So we do use that data around decision-making. Same thing here. Angelie added, so Hillwood is, got in advance, they have, we have different modules within Sown to Grow and so the academic goal setting, Hillwood is piloting right now. And so when she mentioned that, we are also, as we have the needs and have identified them, we're adding in different components. So we don't just have a dashboard at Hillwood, for example, around social-emotional. And there's a happiness meter, for lack of a better word, but also across the district at the school level, we can look at it by cluster, we can look at lots of different things by grade level. But we can also see the number of alerts that are generated, what those are focused on, right? So at the district level, it does, I mean, we're the support hub, right? So how are we leveraging resources to support the needs that are coming from the schools? And the power of this data is, if I'm saying to grow, it's straight from the student. And from Navigator, it is from the adults who are working with those students every day and, and cataloging their needs.
Thank you. And, and I ask that because this is a huge initiative. So I, I text my son, I was like, how are you feeling? And give me an emoji. And he gave me the happy. But one thing that I know from my son and I know working in schools that kids really don't communicate. So one of the things that I see, like the Navigator is included in the multi-tiered systems of support, which I think is awesome. What, what I'm getting to, how do we have, how do we create a relationship between the Navigator and the student, but also transitions to the parent? And, and I'm sorry for this analogy, but like what I loved about Phil Jackson at the Lakers and the Bullseye had the triangle offense. And so you think about school, you think about community, and you think about home where kids spend a lot of time. And, and right now, if you have a teenager, you know, they're, they're not really going deep into what's going on. And I think a connection with the home, the mom or the dad, aunt or the dad can say, hey, just want to give you an FYI of what's going on at home. And so you don't have a disconnect of really helping a student that's dealing with social, emotional issues. And my question is, is there any way we can incorporate, because this is a whole program, the, the parent into the program? Because Abigail beat me to it and I'm glad she said it. One, she broke down Maslow, but two, like she talked about, I, I remember you hearing those calls at home and now we don't hear them. And so that was going to be my question. And so I appreciate her for getting ahead of it. But then it's like, what I see is a, is a missed opportunity to connect all the dots, especially as we deal with middle school and high school kids. Is there a plan? I guess my question, is there a plan to incorporate parents into this triangle?
Carrie, you can approach. And I'll share this, if, in, in my explanation earlier, this is not absent the parent, this is why we also have parent teacher conferences. All those parent communications should still be happening. This is not replacing that, that phone call home or that conference with a student sitting right beside you that in particular at the beginning of the year, tell us a little bit more about your student, your aspirations for your child. This is an additional piece of information, feedback directly from our students to help, inform, and advise. That's a space that we were challenged in earlier, having a system-wide strategy to make sure all students had access to sharing what they were feeling, what their needs were for us to move forward. I could also take 30 minutes and tie back into where we're going with our personalized student dashboard, but just know that those connections are being built as well. But Carrie, talk about kind of our long-term vision here.
Sure. We've, with Sown to Grow in particular, that is designed to be a safe space for the student. But we have, we are, we have provided resources and encouraged navigators, for example, to, to allow a student to use a student-led conference protocol in sharing their Sown to Grow with their navigator. We've not explicitly, to be honest, done that with parents, but that protocol is out there. And we think to the earlier point about self-reflection and like a student being able to look through their data and talk about what was happening with them over time is a really, a really strong adult skill-building strategy. So, but that is a safe space for that student. But there, the tool is there in order, but it would be currently, because the Sown to Grow is a student-facing platform, it's designed for students. We were intentional about that as being part of what we were looking for, but there is the ability for a student to share that with their family or caregiver, absolutely.
And I also want to not forget to highlight POSAP. We do send POSAP checks out to families, to parents and guardians bi-weekly.
That's right.
So that we can gauge parent feedback as well. So this is what you're seeing on the student end. The families also receive that pretty user-friendly text on a bi-weekly basis so that we can gauge where the, the student is, if there's any family needs so that we can be responsive to.
Thank you. And then my, my last question, as we look at some of the disparities within our communities, like when you look at ACT rates, you see them high in one place and very low in the other. So as we look at the data, how is the Navigator program going in some of the schools that are high-performing academically? And then how is the Navigator program going in some areas that are low-performing academically? And are you guys tracking it or is there even a difference?
Dr. Battle?
Here, it's going to, thank you. So the expectation is that all students have a Navigator, as Dr. Battle shared. So we do monitor that and provide support at the school level. When you look at trends, I don't, we don't see the trend maybe that you've just described where certain schools, I mean, it really is, it, it varies as to engagement, will we push in to support and, and keep that expectation high, right? That every student has a Navigator. But we don't, we don't find that there is a trend that some schools have implemented more deeply or things like that than other schools, if that's your question. And, and we continue to push and provide weekly updates to executive directors around the data that's coming from their schools so that they can provide support.
So it's no connection with schools effective rate on the Navigator program based on the ZIP code or how high or low achieving?
We haven't seen those trends. And to be clear, we did GIS mapping of Navigator check-ins, like a heat map, and we didn't see that that was necessarily a trend.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I'm done.
Any other questions or thoughts? All right, go ahead, Ms. Tyler.
Yeah, can I just kind of shift gears a little bit to talk, to ask a little bit more about the, the advocacy centers and using restorative justice in our middle and high schools? I had a meeting with Noah where we were discussing, you know, following along with making sure that our students' needs are being met in a way that is sensitive to their families and to their culture and making sure that they're being heard in a way that, that they feel heard. So I just kind of was wondering, you said that we are very data-driven on these and that we're tracking things. Are you able to share like all, what, what's the data that we're capturing? Are we capturing how many students are being referred overall? Or are we capturing individual students, they're being referred X number of times within this period of time? Are we capturing the data of who are the teachers that are doing the most reporting? What, what are we actually looking at?
We actually have the ability to pull all of the above. I mean, one specific example is, we talk about the tremendous increase that we've seen in collaborative referrals to our students, which means we're aligning supports to the needs of the students as we're determining them on a daily basis. We can break the data down to, to, to see 200 students were referred to a social worker today, right? And so now 200 students, where are those students, right? Have they been referred in the past? Are these new referrals? Have they been connected? Who are they being connected to? I mean, we can, we can drill down to, to that degree when we're identifying trends. We have the ability to see who is entering Navigator data and which referrals they're making. So we have the ability to slice it in, in many different ways as we're looking at district level data and drilling down.
Okay, great. That's really important. I think, like you said, it's important to be data-driven, to understand, you know, is the same student being referred a ton, but only by one teacher? And so maybe there's a personality conflict. Or is the same student being referred repeatedly by a vast amount of teachers for the same issues and they're not seeming to understand? So how do we better support them if this isn't working? Or, you know, is one teacher kind of driving most of the referrals and do we need to talk to that teacher about how can we better support you? It seems like you're really struggling with these kids. So I think it's really important to have that data so that we can look at it. I think it would be a great thing to kind of include that when we're looking at parent teacher conferences, when we're looking at teacher principal conferences, when we're kind of taking the time to self-reflect on how do I use this program? My only concern is that if we're looking at the data, I don't want us to be afraid to refer somebody because it might, you know, I don't want that to.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you, you brought, I'm glad you brought this up because with Navigators and Sown to Grow, referral is a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Right, this is, this is a positive. A referral is not for disciplinary, in fact. A referral is not for disciplinary actions, is not for any exclusionary practices. This is all about referring students for support. So we want as many of those referrals as we can get as needs are identified. So there is no punitive measure to this. If a parent, or excuse me, a navigator suggests that we have an S-team, that we bring the parents in and we meet with the family and the students to make sure we have a strong plan in place. That is a positive. That is something we're going to celebrate because we've identified a need or an opportunity to really elevate the outcomes of our students. So the good news here is that when we see maybe an uptick in the need for students who need more wraparound services for food, right? That's a positive. We now know where to target our next partnership or our next food delivery because we've seen an increase in a particular area. So this is a very positive data-driven process based upon where our needs are. And Carrie said it best, we're a support hub. So what we do is then shift our resources to make sure we're meeting the needs as referred by our adults, our employees, and our students. And we're very proud to have our students' voice be a part of this process because it's, you know, you're able to balance out where the true needs are. So if there was a miss in some way, we also have had an opportunity to hear from the student. And on the other end, because of our POSIP pulse checks, we're able to hear from our parents as well.
Great. I just, I think it's really important that, and I love that you reiterated that it is a positive thing. We are looking to help one another. We are not looking to be punitive. That is important. That's the whole basis of restorative justice. So that's wonderful. Yeah, I just wanted to know a little bit more about the data. How frequently are we going to be checking in on it? Are we, is it like going to be a once-a-year check? Are we going to be doing once a semester? What's, do we have a plan yet?
The data that we receive from Stone to Grow and Navigators?
Yeah, when we start getting the data from Abigail.
Daily? That's a daily process that we're checking in on the data and what we're seeing as far as supports needed. Now, don't get me wrong, when these needs are identified, the schools are immediately responding. They're getting the flags. They know their students, they're responding. Our responsibility is to also look at the data to make sure they have what they need to be able to provide immediately to the students that are being served. So it's really directing those conversations, those resources when we're looking at our equity matrix or making determinations about investments we need to make. We're pulling that data so that we can make sure we're targeting those resources and investments in the right area.
Okay, and then I guess for the longitudinal eye of like, what does it look like for this school? What does it look like for this grade level? Is that something that will be checked yearly? I mean, I'm just trying to think of how are we assessing how well we're supporting everybody? Teachers, parents, students, the whole nine yards?
Yeah, that will be ongoing. We've launched Stone to Grow two months ago, I believe it was. So we're still like learning its capacity. We're still giving feedback to them about what will be most useful for us. And so I think that's to be determined. But most definitely, we want to look at in the long term how such a platform has allowed us to respond to the needs of our students. And as a result, we've been able to improve the outcomes.
Great. And then will that data be available to us, to the public? How is it, will it be accessible?
Yeah, that's, and that's what we're working with Stone to Grow on is just being able to, what data do we need? What data do we want to communicate back?
And without, you know, compromising, you know, without compromising students' identities and all that. I mean, I don't want to overstep those boundaries. But I do think it's important for the public to be able to see trends over time.
Well, and as an example, on slide 13, that was a part of my director's report, you can see engaged schools, what's it called? Engaged teachers, students, the reflections that have been written back. So that means that when a student goes in and shares something, an adult responds to the student and the student can see that and their feedback, the feedback given and the number of alerts received. So in a transparent way, this is already a snapshot of what we're seeing, but also protecting the confidentiality in the space of our students. So this is just one example of what we can pull and kind of a meter of the pulse check on where students are right now.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Good question, Ms. Tyler.
Thank you all for this. I could, I always have an anecdote about my experience with my neighborhood school and how often Ms. Pringle and Dr. Taylor reach out to me. I know everything happening at Doggone School, but one thing that I really appreciate is that my baby had three out of 10 stars for the first like three weeks. He has been consistently between seven and eight stars in behavior, and I am so proud. Today, I was asking him, you know, how was school? What did you do? And after about three responses, he said, I would like to stop talking. And even though I was frustrated, I remember we've been talking about consent and we've been talking about ways for him to help to regulate and set boundaries. And that baby set a boundary with me that I had to respect today. He didn't really learn it from me. He actually got that from Ms. Pringle at Jones for Day. You know, and I only knew that because Ms. Pringle sent that out in her weekly newsletter. And so I just, I of course want to shout out Jones, but I appreciate this kind of intentional, secular, you know, work, the collaborative work that our schools and our parents and our students are doing. But if that baby tells me that I would like to stop talking one more time, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I'm going to try to respect it. So thank you for helping our baby self-regulate. With that, we'll move on to announcements. We'll begin on this end with our senior, Andalee. Would you have any announcements for the week?
Yes, I do. I'm reading a message from my advisor with the Mayor's Youth Council. So the Mayor's Youth Summit is coming up, and it's an annual opportunity for youth to lead conversations around issues that are important to them. They will share their ideas, experiences, concerns, and recommendations to Mayor John Cooper and other key city stakeholders like you. On Wednesday, November 3rd, over 150 Nashville high school students will come together via Zoom to discuss community issues and help us foster initiatives that build a better Nashville for all youth. So we would really appreciate if you could join us. You can register at bit.ly/MycMys2021 or click the link in my Instagram bio at my first and last name, Angelique Kimbo. And for my seniors, the November 1st deadline is less than a week away. Make sure to turn in your college applications. And as always, good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Mrs. Tyler?
Quick shout out, today's school spotlight is in District 9, Harpeth Valley Elementary. So just go Hound Dogs. I used to teach there. I went to school there. I love that place. So shout out to them. And then just a reminder that Friday, there's no school. It's Parent Teacher Conference Day. If you have not heard, you need to reach out to your school. Some schools aren't doing their conferences differently. I know in my district, HG Hill is offering it different hours to better suit our parent needs. So if you're not sure about how to access a parent-teacher conference, reach out to your school's principal.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Mrs. Masters?
I have a few. So I just wanted to say that we, so we did not have a packed town hall this evening. The planning was just sort of difficult with fall break. But we will have another Parent Advisory Council Town Hall on November 23rd at 4:00 PM. So everyone mark your calendars. Also wanted to mention that the Insurance Trust met on October 6th, and they continue to do amazing work in serving our employees. We once again have received American Heart Association Target BP Gold Award and the American Heart Association Workplace Health Achievement Gold Award. And this is just for the really high standards that we have in doing the right sort of outreach and interventions with employees. We also won the Cigna Wellbeing Award. So the awards just keep coming in for how well we serve our employees. We also have been having flu shot clinics. It is flu shot season. I heard from my pediatrician last week that she had not seen any flu yet. So it hasn't started yet, but it will. So get your flu shots. The last open one for MMPS is in the Wellness Center this Thursday from 9:00 to noon. But after that, you can go to the Kroger in the Wellness Center. You can, you can still get the shots. It's just not like a big, open thing. So get your flu shot. Also wanted to give a shout out to Pencil for another great Principal for a Day event. I was very honored on October 21st to serve as Principal for a Day at Hunter's Lane High School. Although I was very clear that if I really tried to be Principal for a Day and take Sue Kessler's place, I probably wouldn't survive it because she's a superhero. So what that really meant was that I joined them via Zoom for a little while and learned a lot of things, which was fantastic. But Pencil, as always, just put on a really spectacular event. I'm just so grateful for all of the good work that they do to help support us in Metro Nashville public schools. I think that is all. I also want to mention that I got to visit an advocacy center in one of the elementary schools. And speaking of the referrals, I was really excited that the lead in the advocacy center at this elementary school was someone who'd been a part of the school population for quite a while, knows the students, knows the teachers. And even as the teachers were sort of trying to figure out, well, I mean, should I refer? What's going on here? He just kind of was going around the school. And if he saw a kid that was a little out of sorts, he was just pulling them in to do like some yoga and deep breathing. And it smelled really good in there. There were lots of essential oils. And the, you know, the ceiling tiles were painted like clouds and it was dim lighting. And I almost just stayed and took a nap. So it was nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Masters. Mrs. Player-Peters?
I'd echo Sue Kessler's being a superhero. There was a story that happened. Dr. Bellamy was there, graduation. Her reflexes are like phenomenal that she actually caught a student before they fell. So Sue Kessler is a superhero, literally. Also, I would like to, and you took my thunder about the flu shots. So get your flu shots if you can. And I was wrapping up with the Wellness Clinic in the next week or two. And then also, I talked to Fabien Benet from the Mayor's Office. And to remind students, if you're 14 years or older, you can participate in the participatory budget process, particularly if you live in North Nashville. The process started in October, goes all the way into December. So students can actively be part of that civic process of where your tax dollar goes to. It's allocated $2 million. So I encourage students to all participate in that if you're 14 years or older and you live in North Nashville about how you can direct some of the taxpayer funds goes to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. John Overton's PAC or the Overton Cluster PAC, they're going to be hosting a viewing of By Design on Saturday, November 20th at Emerson Pike Library from 2:00 to 4:00. Showing is going to be at 2:00, discussions around 3:30, 4-ish. So you are welcome to come to that, whether you are within the Overton Cluster or not. But it's an available, you know, afternoon or weekend option for you. Additionally, speaking on Pencil, we had Principal for a Day last week, and I appreciate the community's involvement. It continues to be really beneficial to have those conversations and build community involvement and partnerships. They also just let me know today that they have a partnership with Lysol and a pallet of wipes is coming to every MMPS building, it sounds like. So it's like 180,000 packs of wipes, which that's a lot of wipes, and we need them. This is about that time of year when you're back-to-school wipes that she sent in are starting to kind of dwindle down as runny noses happen and allergies happen. And so I appreciate that participation with Pencil as well. And then lastly, I want to thank the Mayor's Office for their recent funding that they provided for us on some projects. And personally, I am very excited about Haywood having some of their design fees be funded. And so it's a very exciting time for Haywood and of course, the South Nashville Elementary School. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elrod. Mr. Little?
Yeah, quite a bit. Participated in Principal for a Day with Stanford Montessori, which really made my heart smile. Hate that it was virtual, but it was still good. Another TSU Homecoming is this week. So for all my alum, we say geek, geek. Christian and I were featured in Tennessee Inarc. I don't know if you saw it, Christian, but just highlighted our homecoming experience. We had a Parent Advisory Council meeting last week for the McGavitt Cluster. Thank you to Dr. McKinney and the eight to 12 parents who were on that. We talked about the personalized student dashboard and really got a chance to get good parent feedback for the McGavitt Cluster. Hosting an in-person parent meeting for the McGavitt Cluster coming up in the next two weeks. We're still trying to figure out, based on the interest, the space we need. So I'll send out more details for that. Big news, Propel, Nashville Propel is hosting a town hall tomorrow at 5:30 at Merrill Hyde in Hendersonville. In the last two or three weeks, it's really come about that the governor is trying to restructure student funding. And so Nashville Propel will be co-hosting, asking really good questions before they move forward with this initiative. Shout out to Ms. Callahan for allowing me to dig deep with our middle school students. And so when we were talking about this seed to sow that really was important to me, hearing from a lot of middle school boys. And so really looking, Abigail asked some really good questions that I had. And then last but not least, my 20-year class reunion with Stratford Highs this Friday. So pretty pumped up. So pretty pumped up. Once a Spartan, always a Spartan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ebenezer?
I'd like to start by congratulating all the, everybody that took the PSAT today, especially the juniors, because this year does count for the National Merit Scholarship Program. And I would also like to point out that it's time for us juniors to start thinking about these standardized tests like the ACT and the SAT. So it's all my fellow juniors to, you know, start getting in that mindset. And then I want to finish off by congratulating again Hume-Fogg for their state volleyball championship. They are my, you know, arch rivals because I'm from MLK, but still a win for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, redistricting is happening right now through the Planning Commission. There is still time for you to not only review the maps for both the school board and the council, but also for you to offer feedback. So tomorrow at the Bordeaux Library, from 2:00 to 4:00, by appointment only, you can schedule a time to go review the maps and then offer your feedback. But anyone can come, between 4:30 PM and 7:00 PM. So again, that's tomorrow at the Bordeaux Library, between 2:00 and 7:00 PM, but open houses from 4:30 to 7:00. You can also drop by the Planning Department's offices at the Metro Office Building, out there on Second Avenue, either at the, I'm sorry, next Thursday, or I'm sorry, this Thursday, from 3:00 to 6:00. Now, I believe you can still email redistricting@nashville.gov if you're not able to make any of these, just to offer your feedback. If you go to redistrict.nashville.gov, again, that's redistrict.nashville.gov, you can pull up the maps for both the school, the proposed maps for the school board and the council. There have been some stark changes in some districts. In fact, I completely lose East Nashville in this version, which means I lose about 12 schools and then push further into North Nashville. That's my personal district, but many of us are seeing some changes like that, so feel free to review those. Also, Hume-Fogg magnet, not only are these athletic young people, but these are artistically gifted young people, as they will be putting on High School Musical from November 4th through 2nd at 7:00 PM. They really do a great job at these musicals, at these productions. So please feel free to visit the Hume-Fogg website to purchase tickets for November 4th through the 6th, their High School Musical. And then I have, we have one more, two more, one from Ms. Tyler and one from Ms. Masters. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot two announcements. One, there will be a community meeting at Hillwood High School on Thursday, November 4th, from 6:00 to 7:00, to get community input on naming the new high school. So we have the initial survey. I'll share some of those results at that in-person meeting, and then I will be soliciting advice and ideas from the people who attend. So please mark your calendars, show up to that. And then I just wanted to cheer because Dr. Hildreth posted that a key FDA advisory committee today recommended a lower dose of Pfizer and BioNTech's COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 5 to 11. So I'm extremely excited that my children, that y'all's children, that our kids that are in school are going to have the opportunity to get the best preventative measure very soon. And I want to encourage all of our parents to have their students and their children vaccinated as soon as it's officially approved.
Thank you. Ms. Masters?
I just didn't want to fail to mention that also the Educators Cooperative has another fantastic event coming up this Saturday. It's another one of their anti-racist teaching panels. It is free, it is open to all. Teachers are encouraged to attend, and you can find information about that at educatorscooperative.org.
All right. It's been a pleasure. Be there now for the business, this meeting is adjourned. Go ahead.